All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the USD 290 Board of Education meeting. It is November ninth, 2020 at seven PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Please raise your hand and answer when your name is called. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore.
Present.
Fanda Olmsted.
Present.
Melodya Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
And we have all seven board members present this evening. If you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes seven oh. We do have a few items on the consent agenda tonight. Dr. Cobb, is there anything in particular you'd like to point out to us?
Yeah, there's just two things here. I would like to thank Southern Star for their donation to our robotics team. They've been an incredible partner and certainly will help the Cyclotrons as they start competing this year. So we appreciate their donation. I also wanted to show you that there's a little change in the consent agenda. There was supposed to be a Heartland contract in there for the sale of the Lincoln lot. They've not completed the contract yet. So there's nothing to consent to, removed it from the agenda.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
This is moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Harold Wingert that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes seven oh as well. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. We do have first on our agenda is an executive session. We will need to move into executive session for the purposes of consultation with our attorney. We need to invite Dr. Cobb's with us for that, as well as our attorney, Mike Norris. And we will need probably about twenty minutes.
Yes, twenty-five, Mike, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. All right, if somebody would like to read the action statement.
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship and that the board return to the open meeting at eight thirty.
About seven thirty?
Oh, seven thirty. The clock's off. At seven thirty in this room. And the executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. And I move that Mike Norris and Dr. Ryan Cobb's also be part of this meeting.
There a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes seven oh. We will adjourn and return at seven thirty.
Susan, I'm going to put you right here beside us, okay?
Before, fine.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion that we go back into regular session?
Do you have, yeah, do we have to read the whole thing all over again?
Yes, we do. We do need some extra time with our attorney, so we do need to go back in again, including Dr. Cobb's and including Mike Norris for an additional, do we want 15 or 20?
20.
20.
20 minutes, so we will come back here then at 7:50 if somebody would please read the action statement.
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, and that the board return to the open meeting at 7...
50?
50, okay. In this room, the executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, and Mr. Norris and Dr. Cobb's should be part of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes. Susan is your hand up? Nope, we lost Susan briefly.
We lost Susan.
All right, we'll say 6-0 at this time, and we'll go ahead and we'll take her with us, and she can regroup.
What's that? It's frozen?
She looks frozen.
Is it cold in there?
That's just a moving line. Don't worry about that.
Madam President, I move that we go back into regular session.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Perfect. That passes 6-0. Looks like Susan has momentarily been lost from us, but she will return. We have returned now to open session. We are back. Next up on our agenda is the financial report. Mr. Harold Mays, welcome. We have the information that you provided with us and we look forward to your summary of how we're doing this year.
In the spirit of trying to keep things moving for you, I'm going to go through pretty quick.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and if you have a question, I guess as we're going along, flag me down or if you have a question at the end. Basically, I'm going to cover like three parts of the report and we'll go from there.
Perfect.
Okay, if you open to the independent auditors report. This is our part of the financial statements in which we state who we're auditing, which was the school district. Management responsibility to make sure that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. And then our responsibility to do testing and confirmations, analysis of those records to make sure that they are fairly stated in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Accounting and Audit Guide. Now, because you're a matter of public record, we do have to say that you're not in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. You guys already know that. This is to let someone know who's not familiar with the school district that you're not following GAAP, you're following the K-MAG. So basically, our opinion on the financial statements in accordance with regulatory basis is that they are fairly stated in all material respects and appear to be complete. There are a couple other mentions on the second page because the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide is a kind of a summary record plus detail. We have to talk about the supplementary information that's also presented, which is the more detail. And I'm not going to get into that too much unless you want to. And then we also have to tell you that there's another audit or governmental auditing standards out there that have to be reported on due to the fact of the amount of financial aid that you get from the federal government. And we also tell you that the prior year, which is presented in the back, is also appropriately stated in accordance with the Kansas Municipal County Audit Guide. So if you turn to page 3, 4, and it actually goes from 3, 4 to 5 and 6, this is your summary of cash receipts and expenditures. So it shows all the funds and just briefly for the year, your beginning unencumbered cash started at 16 million, a little over 16 million. And at end of the year at 15 million 3. Most of that decrease is due to the construction fund, which went from 708,000 down to zero as far as unencumbered cash goes. And that's to be expected because you're winding down those projects. Now, some of the other ones that funds that went down supplemental general is down due to basically the taxes and the state aid both being down slightly. Your capital outlay is down, but it was due to the covering of some of the expenditures under the construction that was being done. Let's see, special ed is down. Revenues were actually up in this fund, but the expenditures more than offset that. So it went down as a total. And then textbook is down. There was a big transfer and a lot of expense the year before, big transfer coming out of contingency. This year, there was just a transfer out of general. It was much smaller and much less expense. But basically, you're using some of the reserves left over from the year before. So the end result is is that you have an ending cash, unencumbered cash balance of 15,3 as I said. You have encumbrances about almost, well, just shy of 3 million. So your ending cash balance is sitting at 18 million and it's broken up between those checking accounts and money markets that are showing on page 6. After that, we're going to skip clear back to page 11. The only thing I'm trying to illustrate here is that you did have the Series 2020 refinancing. So that's a new addition to this and part of that's going to be used to defer or decease the, some of the other bonds, but that process was still in process. So you have the bond sitting out there at a bigger amount than probably is going to be next year when we see some of that being actually paid off by those defeased bond or by the trust for the defeased bonds. Then, as always, there's page 15. We get to look at capers and how it affects you. Again, this pension liability that they set up is based upon these people, all the people staying with you, staying through until the date of their death. Basically, in terms of they retire when they say they're going to retire, they're going to live as long as they're going to say they'll live, and they're going to die when they say they're going to die. So it's obviously a big guesswork and the fact, all the other fact is that they're always running a year behind. So this is more like June 30th 19 rather than June 30th or 20 numbers. The other thing is if you read through this, they keep saying that they're going to put the money back and then they put a little back, but then they pull out again, back and forth. So I got a long ways to go and it's kind of interesting. They're saying it's your liability when they're the ones that haven't put the money in like they're supposed to. Page 19 and 20 is again a summary, but what it tells you is that you didn't have any funds that were over budget, which is a budget violation, which would require being stated in the footnotes if it was, but you didn't have any of those. They were either, well, actually you were a little, had a little room in every fund. Sometimes you end up with zero, but that's okay. Zero and having still room to expend is what you want and not over budget. Okay, page 62. Another reason for having the audit other than statutory basis is the fact that you have a lot of federal awards. To be exact, you had 2,135,777 dollars in expenditures of federal funds. And once you cross a $750,000 threshold, you're subject to what they call a single audit. That means that we're looking at financial numbers. We're also doing compliance testing over the grants that we select as being quote major programs for this year. So on page 65, we give another opinion on your internal control of financial reporting because of that federal money and also on compliance, general compliance basically. And on both of those, it's what we call a negative assurance. If you read the whole way through it, it's going to basically say we didn't find anything to report. So we think everything's okay because basically we're not testing 100% of every transaction that's run throughout the districts through the year. We're just testing certain transactions. So that's that report. The second report on page 67 is basically a report on the major funding that we, major programs, I should say, of what you receive. And we look in depth at the internal controls and at the compliance requirements for those specific grants that we looked at in detail, which this year was your Title I grants and your free and reduced meal program. So basically, again, it's a negative assurance. We did not find anything to report. So therefore, we feel that the financial statements, internal controls, and the compliance over these grants was appropriate. So on page 69, that's basically what we tell the federal government. You have an adverse report because of GAAP, but you have an unmodified report because of regulatory basis. You have no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. We didn't have any to report. We can't say that there isn't any. That's one of those little fine tune things that is part of having, whether you do or don't have them because we don't look at every transaction. We didn't find any noncompliance on the federal programs. We did not find any material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. Therefore, we had an unmodified report on the compliance and then we list the programs down below. Any questions? I know that's fast.
Well, I think you did a great job and I really liked this summary and I think it sounds like our audit could not have gone better.
It did.
It was really great and we sure appreciate you every year coming in and sharing this with us. And it gives us, you know, great peace to know that everything is as it should be.
All right.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you again for having us as auditors and we appreciate your business.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
And some kudos should go to Terry as well, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, we are moving on to the next section of our agenda tonight. We have a new ORC director. We welcome to join us tonight Levi Meyer. And, welcome.
Yeah, we just wanted to introduce Levi Meyer, ORC Director. He's going to talk to us a little bit about his vision and the partnership between ORC and USD 290. So I'll turn it over to Levi.
Thank you all for having me. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what I have to say about the ORC and the future moving forward with us. A little bit about me to start. I most recently come to the ORC from the University of Kansas. I was a operations coordinator in their recreation services department. I'm a born and raised Kansan. I grew up in Wichita, but I currently live in Ottawa now with my wife. So in regards to the ORC, our main mission is to get our community involved in active and balanced recreation programs and services. Our vision, to kind of expand upon that, is to improve and maintain the mental and physical health, happiness, and well-being of the citizens of the USD 290 taxing district. As far as my goal moving forward, I kind of have a three-pronged approach for my vision specifically with the ORC. The first thing that I want to accomplish as the director is to get the ORC more involved within the community. Phase two to that, or I guess the second asset, is to get the community more involved with our programs and services and then to develop programs that are going to fit the needs of this community during the trying times that we have with coronavirus and other issues going on. So that's what I'm about. I want to make sure that it's known that I want to partner with the USD as much as we can. I know that we are kind of in that relationship anyways, but I want to offer our services out to the community as much as possible. I don't want it to be a one-sided relationship where we're asking everybody to come to us, but I want to make sure that it's known that we are willing to get out in the community and volunteer our time and our services as well. So that's kind of all I have. I don't have much for you guys. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we're here for you. And if there's anything that we can do to assist, to just let me know, my emails on the website and you guys can reach me there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I do want to say thank you so much for taking the time to come and share your vision and introducing yourself. We, as a board, really appreciate the relationship that we have with ORC. It's really an important part of our community. So thank you very much and we look forward to continuing that relationship.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and I'm looking forward to the future.
Right, we are as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next we have section 6.03. Mrs. Whitaker is going to present some information regarding a possible JAG, J-A-G, Kansas program at Ottawa High School.
Yes, so JAG stands for Jobs for America's Graduates. There's a little story back why it has a K at the end of it. It's actually a nationwide program. There was a grant that the state of Kansas received several years ago and there was some confusion and the money didn't get allocated to Kansas. So they have since coined it as JAG-K, but it's Jobs Across America, or Jobs for America's Graduates, and it is a nationwide program. Dr. Cobb's and I were approached a couple weeks ago. JAG would love to have a program at Ottawa High School. It is a fabulous program. I've been at several other high schools who have collaborated with JAG in Kansas as well as in another state. And I've seen it do wonderful things for students if implemented the correct way. So we want to talk about this tonight because we think it would be an awesome opportunity for us to consider. I don't know that right now is the time for us to consider this program, but we wanted to at least bring it to the Board of Education, have a discussion about what JAG is, what it could offer our students, it could at Ottawa High School and in USD 290, and then kind of go from there maybe with some future discussions. So this is basically their vision and mission. So this is basically their vision and mission for what JAG is. And they really talk about how it's a partnership between students and schools and their ultimate goal is to help those students be future leaders within the community. And so in a minute, I'll talk about some of the ins and outs of JAG, but they really target the lower twenty-five percent of student. They talk about how those are the students that stay within your community, that often don't travel on to college or don't travel on to do other things that they end up in our workforce. So they target those students and they try to build up their skills, so then that way they can stay in your community and become productive citizens. Dean, do you have the clicker, is it down here? Just one more, oh, there it goes, sorry, that was like really bad font and I apologize. So what JAG does is you collaborate with the JAG program to hire what they call a JAG-K Career Specialist. So that is a person, we would decide whether we would want that individual to have a teaching license or maybe they would have some other area of expertise. And then they go through a very extensive training through JAG in order to be a career specialist. It's an elective class that would be within our master's schedule. They genuinely, generally ask that you have three or four classes and you work with a maximum of fifty students. Like I said, they look at, they start looking at the lower twenty-five percent of students. They look at their academic needs, their physical, psychological, environmental barriers that might be getting in their way of being successful and those are the students that they target for this program. It is a competency-based program, there's a national curriculum that is utilized by the JAG Career Specialist. The JAG program, the kids have to do ten hours of community service a year. They also need to do something for the school. And so a lot of times you will see these kids band together and do maybe a big career fair that would be hosted in the building for all the students to engage in or some type of activity that they would be engaging all of their classmates in, in the field of, in the career field. There is a twelve-month follow-up and so the career specialist follows the students for twelve months. And so when the school year ends at the end or in the middle of May, the JAG specialist keeps a track of those students throughout the summer. Part of their job is to make sure that those kids have employment and that they're successfully holding that employment over the summer months, working on resumes and doing all of those different activities that they, just some skills that they might not have built up. So that happens for twelve months. There are three statewide JAG competitions every year that the students can go to to show off their employability skills, maybe to show a video that they have made about their high school. Every year, there's a theme and there's different projects that they ask for the students to compete against. If you win at the JAG-K Kansas Convention, then there is an opportunity for students to qualify to go to Washington DC. I have been at a school one time where a group of students earned that ride and it was pretty incredible to watch the pride that they had in, in that experience as they got to travel to our country's capital to show off kind of their expertise in their area. And so there's, there's a lot that the JAG program can offer for students and for the school. When you first start a JAG program, every year the kids elect a president and a vice president and a secretary with, in their organization and all the classes. And then every year they have an installation banquet for those officers. So it's an opportunity for the students to rally together, to organize something like that, to have a guest speaker come in and talk with them and really take pride and ownership in what they're doing. So that's just a little, like a very brief overview of everything that JAG-K offers to a school, but we wanted to present that to you all today, like I said, for some further discussion. This time I would ask if you have any questions about JAG.
And I do want to clarify for our board, this is listed as an action item.
Oh, yes, but it's.
But as Mrs. Whitaker is not recommending that we do that at this time, we do not need to take any action tonight. So if anyone has any questions for her? I appreciate you presenting this information and look forward to hearing more about it. It sounds like a good program, but it's just not a fit right now with, with everything else we have going on.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note, and Mrs. Whitaker's done a great job with this, but this was one of the conversations that she and I had upon her first joining our district and the work that she had done with JAG in previous districts. I think it is an incredible program and it has been beneficial to a number of districts and a number of students across their state and across their nation. It is similar in its, in its desire to Avid, but a completely different avenue than Avid. So there are some similarities, but also some, some differences there. Maybe the biggest one is the, the volume of staff that it takes to implement an Avid program and the, and the dollars that it takes to train our staff. Those things are all taken care of within the JAG program and not the responsibility of the school, which is very different from the Avid program. But just if you were drawing correlations, that's a, that's a huge one to consider.
I, I have one quick question. What are any other districts that we might know that use this program?
Shawnee Heights has a JAG program.
There's seventy-eight programs in forty-three different states. I put the website link on there and if you click on that, it takes you and it shows you everywhere in Kansas that they are. I know Shawnee Heights, the Lawrence Schools, the Tamaa Schools utilize it. I believe Olathe had one at some point in time, but I'm not sure if they do at all their schools or not. But on that website, it kind of lists all the schools that do.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
All right, well, I think we are ready to move on to our next item tonight for discussion, which is the Twenty One, Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two calendar. This item is just for discussion tonight and it will be broken into two parts. I just want to clarify for those that are watching, we are going to first discuss the two options that have been presented to us for the following year, Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two. Then after that discussion, Dr. Cobb's will present a different type of calendar that might be considered in the future.
Great, so Dean, if you'd click on Calendar One. So our district has really worked under the same model of calendar for the last four, five, six, seven, eight years. It hasn't deviated much in its, in its creation other than placement of days. So through conversations last year, specifically with this board, there was some, some frustration maybe about the start of the school year, the, the end of the semester and when it falls and, and the one that garners all the attention, which is spring break and where spring break lies. So this, this calendar has us set up very similarly to what would have been this year's calendar pre-COVID. So, but we did recognize that, that starting as early as the ninth still creates some, some anxiety, especially knowing that we're not going to end basically until June. So that summer break is compressed quite a bit there. So we tried to, to make that as, as beneficial as possible, which is why you see some of those days split out and the half day beginning on a Monday instead of the Friday and pushing the, the times back. Other than that, the things in essence remain the same. The feedback that we've gotten from teachers has been kind of similar to, to what we, we got with the, with the calendars last year. And that this model, we have some teachers who don't like how early it starts and we have some teachers who appreciate how late it, or how early it ends. But you can't have late start and early ending to, to make all of that work out. So, spring break actually on this calendar falls on K-State's calendar, I believe. The seventh through the eleventh, I believe, is the University of Kansas. The fourteenth through the eighteenth is Kansas State University. And the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth fall on all the other four state universities, which includes Emporia State, Pitt State, Fort Hays State, and Wichita State. So at no point in time would we meet everybody's needs in terms of identifying a spring break. And the states push to create a statewide spring break, I think is going to fall by the wayside. I think it's difficult to indicate that they're pushing local control and decision-making and nearly every aspect of schools this year yet want to control when spring break falls on the calendar. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it, but it is what it is. So this is calendar option one. If we could move to calendar two, so this one you see changing the, the dates and pushing back an entire week. So this would have teachers report to school on the sixteenth, students report on the twentieth and their first full day on the twenty-third. The, the rest of the calendar is fairly similar. It does require some change to the negotiated agreement. As in this particular calendar, it removes the flex day, which would have been on the twenty-second in the, in the preceding calendar. But because the end of the semester actually goes into January, that flex day becomes a work day, which would then be on the, on the tenth. So the last day of the first semester would be January seventh. It does mean that students would come back from a two-week break essentially and have to finish the semester the, the following week there, the first week in January. It also means that teachers don't return to a PD day like they have the last couple of years in, in the return from January. This spring break has us falling on the, the state university schedule with ESU, PSU, FHSU, and WSU. And the reason for that is as you push those things back, that spring break falls at a distinct, basically nine-week period for the end of the quarter. So the quarter would end on the seventeenth, students would receive an extra day of spring break, which would be the work day on the eighteenth, and then we finish up the year. This does push back graduation until May twenty-first. Seniors' last day would most likely be the eighteenth and then everybody's last day would be on the twenty-fourth. The twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and thirty-first would be the official snow days. On this calendar, if we ever had to go to snow days, if you remember, we did this two years ago, we would push the work day back and the snow days would actually be the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. Work day would become the thirty, thirty-first because the thirtieth is a holiday. I don't remember which holiday that is. Memorial Day, there you go. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't attend on that day. But that is something to, to keep in mind as we look at those snow days. So those are the two calendars. Conversations with staff have kind of been a mixed bag at this point. But before we get there, the, the real question is, are there things within these two calendars that would you, that you would like me to address or change and try to accommodate in some way before we present a calendar to the board in the coming weeks for approval for next year?
Well, I, I personally like the fact that semester ends at Christmas. I think that is beneficial for everyone, beneficial particularly for the kids. It's really hard to come back after a two-week break and then take finals.
Yeah.
I echo that, that's what I've heard, is just coming back after Christmas break after two weeks, so I concur with Linda.
So one of the questions that will come from this is, why can't there be a mixed number of days? Chris is a graduate of Bonner Springs, Bonner has a really weird schedule. They typically start after Labor Day in September.
Thank you.
And then, so you, you might see like seventy days in their first semester and like a hundred days in their second semester. The number of, of college courses and semester courses that we offer specifically at OHS inhibits this quite a bit. And, and what it would mean is that, for instance, if you're taking Comp One in, in the first semester, that your Comp One is going to be compressed in time and your Comp Two is going to be extended in time, which really makes it difficult to address the needs. And if you have students taking the same class on both sides of the semester, it means that they may not be getting the same education based upon days. So we developed the calendar to try to make those days as, as comparable as possible. And that's why you see a semester end after the break versus just making two different, two lopsided calendars, or at least divisions of the calendar. Other questions or comments? No?
No, all right.
Okay, so.
Just the semester, that's the only thing that, that I think we need to pay attention to.
The other one I put up here, I'll be honest, I told this to Julie this morning, is one, I feel like I've been in COVID purgatory and dealing with the day-to-day operations of our district and, and our inability to be innovative in, in this environment and really think outside of the box because of how we have to manage day-to-day. And what, what we have learned from, from COVID is that the agrarian calendar really limits us in a number of different ways. And so we would look at different options and how we might better meet the needs of our students. So this type of calendar would take an immense undertaking and a great deal of conversation with our community and conversation with our board. And this is not, this is simply a, a calendar to draw an understanding of what a year-round calendar could look like. There's lots of different models. But we hear a couple of, of things every year. One, the first part of the year, which is, which is split with breaks, is much easier to get through than the second half of the year, which is almost January to May with, with only the one extended break in between. The beginning of the year, you have increased emotions because it's the start of the year again, everybody's excited. Then we have a little break right off the bat for, for Labor Day. Then we have Thanksgiving break in there, then we have winter break in there. And we're even talking about it right now, is if we can just get through the next three weeks, we got a break. And then we get through the next three weeks and we got a break. And it completely changes the emotion of staff. We can create that environment every quarter in a year-round schedule. The other thing that we, that we recognize is that the summer slide for our students is significant. And then we go through this every year where we see that, that dip. And we know that in our community, we, we have to address food service over the summer. We have to address childcare over the summer, we have to address social emotional over the summer. There are all sorts of these things that we have to address over a period of ninety days without school. Extended school year, summer school, all of these things begin to occur. In this particular calendar, what you begin to see, and if Dean would scroll down, you see how the calendar rolls back. So if you look up here at July, you can see that we don't start until the twelfth. This is a typical first week of school. And if he scrolls down, you'll see that it rolls back through, keep going, keep going, through June. So there is a five or six, I think it's six weeks, five weeks here of a complete break away from anything. But when you start in July, what you get here, Dean scrolls up there, your typical beginning of the school year and then you have a, I think it's a forty-two day period, forty-three day period maybe, which is your typical nine weeks, your typical quarter. And then you have a three-week break. So come September, you're going to have an extended break for kids. What this does provide is that you don't need to do summer school in the same capacity anymore. So as you start seeing these kids who have diminished skill sets that need to be addressed, we can take this first week right here and address skill sets, much like we would in summer school, over the course of four quarters. You would have four weeks, but not every kid has to attend the, the entire four weeks. If what we're identifying is we need to address particular skills in this quarter during this week. So we can ensure that students are getting the additional help that they need now versus, oh, we need to adjust reading over the summer for something that we should have or could have begun to address back in September. So, and then everybody gets two weeks. So if you're meeting all of your goals, all of your expectations, you got a three-week break in there. If not, you have at least a two-week break in there. So everybody gets a break from school. You then move into October and you have the same thing, I think this one's forty-one days. But you basically end school, this is your flex day right here, so the last day of students would be six, the sixteenth. But you again have a period, a, a three or four week, it's a three-week break for students. Again, it's prior to the week before, you see major holidays in December. So you could again address skill set needs here in the short term prior to our, our students going on, onto any break and still being able to get back to a normal kind of school setting as we return in, in January. In January, again, I think this one is, I think winds up being forty-one days. But then you see spring break. Here, we make a lot of people happy because we cover more spring break time, right? I mean, that's the, that's the reality of it, is that people like spring break and want to make sure that they can have spring break with their kids. And then as we finish up the school year, there are, I think, forty-three days in this one, I can't remember right off the top of my head. But you again have some days off here on Friday as the gets, as the end of the year starts getting long. And then you break back to, we've got a five-week period before we go back to, to school again. So the idea behind this calendar is that we can begin to meet student needs. So, the idea behind this calendar is that we can begin to meet student needs in a different way, the social-emotional piece, the attending school more regularly piece, the not having a summer slide piece, the being able to address student intervention at the time of need for intervention versus waiting until summer school to provide more intervention. All of these things can exist in a year-round calendar. But I wanted to be able to show that this board and this school district does not have to be bound to an agrarian calendar if it thinks there is a different model to explore. So, I just wanted to show you that we can break out of the mold. We can look at different models and we can address different models if this board is interested in looking at those different models. This would be one of them. Mrs. Whitaker worked at a district that I believe did a similar model to this, had a longer summer break but still compressed, not the entire time, but maybe like one and a half weeks in between every quarter, right? So, you could compress it. I know that people are going to talk about, yeah, but summer is for baseball seasons and so on. There isn't any reason why those things can't continue to exist in this calendar. The next thing we'll be asking, yeah, but what about KESHA? Well, just so you know, Iowa's baseball season occurs outside of the school year. They play high school baseball in the summer, and it's still high school baseball and they still have. We can make those things work. Those shouldn't be barriers to us at least exploring other options because there are a number of districts that find ways around those things to begin with. So, again, I needed to do something innovative. Part of this is just about me, right? Because I needed something to make my brain work and something that wasn't related to COVID and something that made me feel like we were doing something different for the benefit of our student body that would make us all think and at least explore different possibilities. So, any thoughts or questions?
About a million.
I do too. I've had various comments because obviously this hit Facebook. How will sports work? I don't think teachers are ready, after all they've endured so far, to even consider taking this on for next year. So, I'm trying to think of what else. Kids that have summer employment, that would definitely cross them off of being able to work. I think that's it.
I think there are a couple of things for us to recognize and understand. One, I tried to clarify late over the weekend that under no circumstances was the intention of this calendar to be implemented for next year or even considered for next year. It was built around next year's schedule so that you could see what an example would look like. Two, remember what we're tasked with. The task of this board is to make decisions about the best academic options for students, right? And we have students who work all year long and find ways to work and marry and mingle school with work. It can happen over the course of the summer as well. We have students who participate in sports outside of the school sports and club sports during the school year. Club volleyball occurs during the school year. What is the basketball?
M-A-Y-B.
M-A-Y-B basketball, all of those basketball, some of those occurred during school years, right? So, dealing with sports for parents who choose to do so occurs in our system now. Kids play soccer outside of the school soccer season during school. They travel to Kansas City, they go wherever. Traveling baseball takes place all year long. I know that we've got kids who just went to Arizona two weekends ago to play in a huge tournament in Arizona. Those things occur during the school year now, right? So, there will be barriers and there will be conversations. And all of them are worthy of conversation. But if we remember what our task is, to build a calendar that meets the needs of our students, that is the most important aspect of what we want to accomplish. Whether this is the right one or not, that's your job to determine, right? But because we always have, and because the agrarian calendar has been in place for 100 years, doesn't necessarily mean that it's the best calendar for us to continue to implement without at least exploration of others. And so, I mean, just something to keep in mind is I know we're going to deal with people. And people are going to say, oh, my God, you can't do this to us. And this is, I will tell you that after it was out, I've had more people tell me, let's do this calendar, than I've had people tell me, let's not. I mean, so there are certainly going to be people on this side of this as well.
When I looked at this, I thought of actually all the possibilities it presented. I was thinking, when we were talking about partnering with ORC, you know, some of the August months, perhaps there could be some partnerships there with them, the pool, PE, whatever. I mean, it's a great opportunity for some fantastic field trips, for some great outdoor learning experiences that we don't have available to us now because school gets out so early. Let's see, what else? Oh, I looked at vacations because I'm a teacher at heart. I look at when the vacations are. And there are wonderful vacation opportunities. It's June, July, you know, great times to go camping with your family. End of September, if you've never seen the foliage back east, you can finally do it. December, nice long vacation to be with your family. And then again, like you said, that March, it hits all the spring breaks. You're making everybody happy with that one. And I love the idea, the fact that we can encompass summer school with, well, summer school, quote unquote, you know, educational experiences every nine weeks instead of waiting till the end. That's the best part.
I think, again, as we start talking about the things that hinder our students, one of the things that occurs during the school year is that there are certain times when our parents can take vacations and when they cannot. And oftentimes, it's difficult for them to take spring break. So, I will just tell you that as the son of a doctor, when growing up, and nearly every doctor had kids that were the same age. Not every doctor at OFP can take spring break at the same time, right? Which means that somebody was going to be left not going, and that means that maybe you weren't going to be able to go, or you were. But everybody's profession has something that is going to hinder your ability to take vacations at a scheduled time like our school creates, whether it's just summer or here's your Christmas break and here's your spring break, and very limited timeframes in there. We have a number of students who miss large portions of a week or an entire week of school to go on family vacations because it's the only time that families can take them. This would at least give some latitude to be able to do that. The other piece of this that I've gotten back from school nurses pretty quickly when they began to see it is, boy, if we had this now, then the times that we might have to miss due to COVID are much easier to break up and fix because you have these breaks within your schedule that allows you to maneuver much easier than what we have right now. So, there are positives, there are certainly negatives. But it is a different option, one to explore, maybe not to consider, but to explore.
Well, I think everything that our faculty has been through this last few months, all the switches and changes and thinking outside of the box, I would think that they would at least look at it and consider it because, I mean, they're kind of used to thinking outside the box now.
Yeah. I think we ask our teachers to develop a schedule with a hybrid model that was certainly different. And the calendar in and of itself did not, the scheduling process changed immensely. This is kind of a different way to look at the same structure. What do we have to do to best meet the needs of all of our kids? And this is certainly one way to look at it.
Whereas I agreed with you before, option one was good because of the spring, you know, when the quarter ended or semester ended. I guess I kind of look at it the other way. We have been through so much change. If you take our district, and we went through the Gemini program, and we were out the front runner of everything, and then COVID hit. And I think we've even said it here a little bit, I think sometimes you just need, say, timeout and take a deep breath.
And I think that's happening. It's just something to think about.
Yeah. So, I think part of what's happening is that maybe we need a year or two to just get back to what we're doing. And then I do worry about, you know, you bring up sports or somebody brought up sports, and yeah, we'll go play football, and we'll still line up against Palo or Lewisburg and play them. We just have to figure out what the coaches and students are going to do, but they don't get a timeout for that. And there's other activities, you could say FFA, FBLA, you know, we could go right down the list of all that. I do worry a little bit about a three-week slide every nine weeks for kids. So, I think I do worry a little bit. I know you talked about the summer slide, okay? And when I was thinking about this over the weekend, I don't have any data because I don't know anybody's really doing it. And this is a hypothesis, which means it hasn't been proven one way or the other, might be totally out of line. But I do worry that, you know, you're going to take a three-week break, and then you have miniature little slides. And then the other thing is your teachers, and I know we do it a semester, we're pretty good about stopping things right on a semester. But I don't know anymore that nine weeks is really the ending, you know, of the deal. So, you'd really have to work with your teaching profession to say, hey, every nine weeks, you really need to have a stopping point and finish a chapter, finish a segment, you know, before, so you don't have that deal. So, I'm not saying no, but I'm certainly thinking it's something that at this point in time, I have a lot more concern than I do positive, but something we can look at down the road at some point in time.
Yes, Susan?
I'll tell you, back in the Dark Ages, I went to year-round school. And I thrived in that environment because it gave me tangible goals, gave me fixed periods of time when I could concentrate, gave me tangible goals. You know, we had this planned on the time off. We had this planned when we were, and I actually was in boarding school. So, I was there five weeks, had a week off. There five weeks, had a week off. And so, we never talked about the summer slide. We never, you know, you could finish a certain amount of work and you moved on. And so, I was able to because, I don't know, I was just able to move beyond my grade faster just because of having that focused time. So, I was already in what equated to fifth grade here and was only aged up about fourth grade. So, anyway, so they had trouble placing me when we came back to the States, to be honest with you. But anyway, I think it's definitely worth considering. I know there's different ways to look at it. There's got to be data out there that talks about this. I think our prime directive is to educate the kids to the best of our ability in the most creative and awesome ways possible because they deserve it. And so, if that's what we decide we need to do, then we need to do that.
I think we can get the data. There are districts all around that do this.
What districts do this?
Well, I know, I have friends that live in Aurora, Colorado, and that city does it. I mean, there are lots of cities that.
What districts in Kansas? Did you mention any?
Not in Kansas that I know of.
So, we would be the only district in the state doing that?
We would be the only one. But I will tell you that this is going to be a legislative conversation and continues to be. I know that Blaine Finch at one point in time thought that it might be tied to innovative schools and funding, that you would get increased funding if you moved to a year-round school model. So, it's a conversation that's currently existing in the legislature as well. Now, whether or not they would ever act upon that is yet to be seen. But that was a conversation that Blaine and I had last year. And we've actually presented this calendar to a calendar committee in the past when Dean Kat was here, not this particular one, but a year-round type of a model. So, the conversation has been here for a number of years. The question will always be, are we ready to make a leap? And I don't think, I have heard multiple board members tell me that sometimes we just need to take a timeout and a break. And what I would tell you is that there is never a timeout or a break in education. It's different every day. And our job is to always find ways to try to make it better for the students who attend our systems and for the staff that works in them. So, we don't ever really get to take a break. There's never really a timeout that exists there. And if something like our calendar can have a tremendous impact upon how we educate kids, then that's what we see as being valid and worthy of exploration, right? And not even necessarily consideration or one that would ever be voted upon by our board, but at least acknowledgement that we're looking and experimenting with other models to try to determine what is best for our students. And if what this board determines is an agrarian calendar continues to be the best calendar for our students, then great. But at least we've explored it and gone down that path. But certainly, we can gather data if that is something that people would want to see because there are a number of schools out there that do implement this type of a calendar, not necessarily with a three-week break in between, but some sort of year-round model. I do want to make sure that everybody recognizes that this is the same number of school days and the same number of workdays that currently exist under the negotiated agreement. So, that piece hasn't changed. There's nothing different about that that would have to necessarily be negotiable because the board sets the calendar. So, I'm not saying that it's, that you want to go through without having OEA on your side with something like this, but it's certainly the board's decision to implement the school calendar is UC fit.
This is really very similar to the type of calendar I taught under, when I taught in San Francisco, way back in the Dark Ages. So, it's, these have been around for a long time.
Chris, we haven't heard yet from you. Did you have any comments on this?
Oh, I was letting it go.
Oh, no, yes, it's fine.
Willie was having.
Oh, I'm sorry. Really, she's not done. Go ahead.
I have heard from numerous families, the majority of them, I know you don't like the term numerous, but in this case, it is very true. And all but two of them that I've heard from have all been farming families. And so, what would be your suggestion to farming families?
I guess I don't understand what my suggestion would need to be. I don't know what the expectation of those families are on their kids during the time. So, I know that Harold might consider himself to be a farming family, but I don't know if that is the same type of farming that Lynda does where there's crops. What I would say is it's November, and there are a number of families out there that are still trying to get their crops in during the school year. So, people find ways to overcome these things. So, I don't know what the expectations of families are for one another in what would be considered a farming lifestyle. I think that's different for how you choose to identify yourself as a farmer. Many of them continue to farm throughout the entire year and find ways to do so when we're in school and when we're not in school. So, I guess I don't.
Are they worried about harvest time?
I'm sorry?
Are they worried about harvest time?
No, the things that take place during the summer that they use.
Okay. I'll just give you one example. June, late June to 1st of July is typically wheat harvest and hay. And if you look at this calendar, we would be off four weeks of that harvest time. We'd be off the end of June, three weeks, and into July 9th. So, I think I see what Ryan's saying is, some of this stuff's still going on right now while we're doing school. I just came to the school board meeting tonight, and farmers were out harvesting beans, which we are in school today. I think all of us in life, and I can speak of this of the last four weeks, you learn to overcome. You learn to overcome with what life pitches you. And I have said to you many times, how do we overcome this pandemic? And we've missed educating our children for months. And our K through five kids are going to suffer. That's where we're going to see it. And a calendar like this maybe helps start repair that. Is this set in gold or set in stone? No, but I think eventually you've got to start the conversation of how we fix loss in education to our children. The best way out of poverty is education. If we don't start fixing it, and we just keep saying, we're going to stay inside this same box, we slam the door shut on learning anything new because if we go with the mindset of, well, this is the way we've always done it, and we're going to keep doing that, that's insanity. So, I think you have to start having some conversation, how to twist some stuff to better the kids, and then we just figure it out.
So, I think I would want to say one more time to anybody watching that, no.
So I think I would want to say one more time to anybody watching that, no, this calendar is not up for adoption for the 2021 or the 2122 school year, is not proposed in that manner, that it is simply a model for us to have a conversation about how we might begin to look at a different calendar option for our community. And if we were to ever consider something different than the agrarian model, that it would have to take into consideration community perspective, parent perspective, staff perspective, and certainly district perspective of what was best in that model to overcome some of the barriers that everybody has brought. Because change is hard and oftentimes, people are very fearful of change. So under no circumstances could it simply be, hey, here's our new calendar for next year. We're going to start school on July 12th. There would be a lot of work, a lot of work and a lot of conversation and a lot of give and take to begin to make something like this a reality within our community. It would take a lot.
Well, I think it would even take two-plus years, even if we decided tonight that we wanted to do something like this. This is something you can't.
I would agree.
There's no way. There's too many moving parts, community-wide, staff-wise, administration-wise, and board-wise, that would have to get done before you could ever set something like this in stone. I just think it's a conversation.
Lydia, did you have something else?
I did. I was just going to give the example, like, on this calendar, the week that you will be starting school is the week of our county fair that I know a lot of families participate in, and it is an early morning event till late at night. So that was one of the things that was pointed out to me. There are national 4H events that occur during these times. The CWF trip to Washington DC would also be when, like, this is in school. There are a lot of church camps that fall in the times that this is, this would propose to be in school. And then just that a lot of families rely on their kids and other high school kids in order to do their farm work in the summertime and that they would be, I'm not sure how to phrase this nicely, it would be very difficult to not have that, them, those labor options. So.
All of those, certainly valid, valid points. And again, if we were to ever determine that we needed to go down this path, there would be lots of conversations that would need to occur. But again.
I think it's worth having those conversations, though. I don't think, I know, I don't have enough information to say year-round school is a great idea or it's not a great idea. But I'd like to have some of those conversations with the community and the parents and the teachers and the students and the different ways families would be impacted by that and just see what it looks like. Look at the data. Just do some investigation and this probably would not be something that would happen in the next two or even three years, but maybe, you know, if it's something that seems like it would be good for our community and good for our students, that down the road might be an option. But I'm certainly open to learning more about it.
Sure.
I think there's a lot of us in this room that would be negatively affected, as some of the points Lydia stated. I mean, I would be one of them. I'm sure she and her family and Harold and probably David some too. But I think all this is, is a start to a conversation of where you move days around or these weeks around or whatever. But I just, I just took it, when I started getting phone calls about it, that it was a conversation piece and just a discussion of an idea.
Absolutely. Let's talk about opening schools.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
That's all right. Does anyone else have any other comments about this calendar before we move on to the next item, which is transition to full-time?
Okay, so today, for the first time, and I think I put it out, 241 days, we had all of our buildings open for a full day of students. I mean, you think about that. Chris talked about the missed opportunities for education due to COVID-19. 241 days since all of our students have been in a building full-time. So if you, specifically with high school kids, it's been 241 days since they've been in school for a full day. That's extensive. The gating criteria is looking pretty poor. But there are some things, again, that our criteria would tell us that we need to be wary of. So I think that FCHD, the Health Department, put out that they had 70 somewhat positive cases since Friday, which is a lot. And certainly something that we need to be cognizant of and that we need to take very seriously. What I would tell you and what the information that I've shared with you, that I continue, and Mike Norris told me this evening, that yes, we need to be very leery of sharing the data if it creates identifiable information. Our county health department has indicated to me that we need to be very leery of sharing the data if it creates identifiable information. But what they would, what our health department, what Dr. Ransom, what Nick Robbins would all agree with is that transmission of COVID has not been found in our schools, that our schools at this point are one of the safest environments for our kids to be in. We have very little, if any, transmission of COVID-19 from student to student. The vast majority of cases, and without giving specific information, well over 90% of all of the documented cases that we have of students comes from exposure outside of school and most typically in the home. So what we hear from KDHNE, and again, what we get from Franklin County Health Department, is that the mitigating measures that we put in place in our schools are having a tremendous impact upon the transmission of COVID from student to student and from staff to student or from student to staff or staff to staff. We're not seeing that occur readily. It's not saying that it hasn't happened at some point, but it is not, the term that they use, it is that it is highly unlikely the transmission will occur as long as students are wearing masks. And even more unlikely if we put in the other mitigating events of sanitizing hands, disinfecting our stations, and certainly social distancing, to the point that even now, they're indicating that as long as our students are wearing masks, that social distancing is not an indicator of whether or not students will be quarantined. This is a huge positive for schools, that as long as the other mitigating factors are in place, that they are deeming our schools to be a safe environment for our kids. It is, so I have the document from the county health department. It goes to schools. I'm not sure that they want it publicly displayed. I will ask Casey Brady tomorrow if it is a public document. But very clearly, it states in there is that if students are not social distancing in a classroom, do they all have to be quarantined? The answer was no. As long as every student is wearing a mask, quarantines would not be needed. The masks are the most vital portion of our students continuing to be able to attend school for full-day periods. Now, it doesn't mean that our schools are not going to be impacted by COVID. The things that are happening outside of the day are continually making it more difficult to staff, to have kids in school, because we are seeing kids being asked not to attend school based upon recommended quarantines and exposures and so on and so forth, with staff as well, right? But our school environment is being deemed safe, again, because of the mitigating factors. But we are starting to see more positive cases that are getting to impact our ability to teach students effectively because our teachers are being quarantined and now they're having to remote in and talk to our students via technology while our students are in school. Those are things that we can overcome and those are pieces that we can address. Our return has been nothing but phenomenal. I mean, at this point, we have schools that haven't had a single positive case yet. And that's phenomenal. And that is because we have teachers and staff and administrators implementing great protocols, ensuring that our students are safe, communicating effectively with our parents when we have issues, ensuring that they understand that we're working with the county health department to identify students who might need to be quarantined based upon exposures and so on and so forth. So all of that information is resulting in what has been very limited COVID-19 impact upon our student body while at school. That is a huge positive for us to take out of this. As we start getting further into this, the gating criteria is very clear. We continue to see large volumes of students, or not students, of people within the county testing positive and being asked to isolate or quarantine. Right now, as of 11-1, where we had typically seen, as we started the school year, 39.1, 43.1, fairly low numbers per 100,000. Currently, that's at 524, almost 525. That is something that we need to be cognizant of. It is something that does impact our schools. Certainly something that impacts our parents. And certainly, it's indicating that this virus is being transmitted from persons to persons. Now, a lot of that number, I think, is dependent and resulting from some issues in our retirement homes and our assisted living facilities. Not all of them. If you look at the data, it would identify that there's a large volume of kids, 14 to 18, or whatever it happens to be, that we're seeing positive results from. You're also seeing a high percentage of positive assessment. Over the course of the last two weeks, it's 21.22%. Now, again, you take this data for what it's worth. They're not assessing everybody like they used to. We're not putting out 600 tests a week, but we are assessing people with symptoms and we have more people with symptoms. But I think that this one actually was 400 tests this week versus 600. But again, you're seeing more positive results and that's certainly not good. Hospital data, and remember that this is about in our area, right? So when you look at this, and we'll talk about the problem areas with the green cells as much as we will with the red cells. Our area is listed as the northeastern part of Kansas. I think Advent Health, I was going to call it RMH there for a second. I think Advent Health is struggling with space in their building right now. I could be wrong, but that's my understanding. Julia?
I'm not allowed to comment on that, but certainly we could find information out on that.
That is, these are things that we're going to have to look at locally and make some determinations. But overall, there is space. The data would indicate that there is space. So that is something that we have to consider and something that is at least worthy of discussion with this board. From an elementary standpoint, it is vitally important that our students continue to remain in school. It is vitally important. Without being in school, without learning the requisite skills to read and write, add and subtract, do those things, we set our students up for a lifetime of difficulties. It is vitally important for our elementary kids to receive the education that they so deserve within our schools. And I think that we can show that our schools are a safe environment for them to be in. The more that we begin to have external influences on our buildings. So think about what it looks like when you go into an elementary school. Typically, class size, I think our largest class size in elementary right now is 19 kids, lowest is maybe 12, right? So let's say we have an average of 15 kids cohorted in a classroom that maneuver through the day together. Those 15 kids doing everything together, they call that a cohort, and ultimately, they are in a capsule. Some people might call it a bubble. But in essence, those kids, we can safely recognize and identify what every step of the day will look like for them, right? We can identify when they will go down the hallway to the bathroom. We can identify when they will do this. And we can identify that the whole group will do it together, right? When you get to middle school and high school, that is completely different. When you get to middle school and high school, especially high school, you now are beginning to add external influences, including athletics and activities that take kids outside of our normal day. But you're also talking about a group of 20 kids that might be in this class, going to 20 different classes in the next 51 minutes, and those 20 kids going to 20 different classes in the next 50 minutes, and one kid, in essence, creating, if you like, the six degrees of Kevin Bacon, in essence, creating six degrees of the Ottawa High School student touching every student at Ottawa High School. Again, that is something for us to consider. Now, again, in having a conversation with the county health department today, they would indicate that we don't have anything that would tell us that our schools are not the safest, not asafe, the safest place for our students to be. But we would be remiss if we weren't recognizing that some of the external influences are ultimately going to come into play when we have to make decisions about what is safe for our students and staff to continue as we move forward. So I got a little windy there. Sorry, I apologize. Questions or comments for me?
I think the most conversation that I have with people from the community deals with how safe the schools are. And I tell them, it's the safest place your child can be. But they hear the numbers from, you know, Western Kansas and Wichita, and they apply it to us. And so they really don't know how safe our schools are. And I realize we do not want to identify individuals in any way, but is there some way that we can get out to our parents on a weekly basis, this is how safe our schools are, we only had this or we had zero or whatever?
Yeah. So actually, I had a conversation today, because some of the numbers are so small in our schools, putting out specific values of exposures or positive tests or even quarantines would make it very easy to identify who those students were, which is not something we want to get to. Again, you might have heard me ask Mike Norris about it today. I know that Aletha creates a dashboard. His statement today was, yes, it's very concerning. Aletha's concerned about it. DeSoto is concerned about it. They both do those things. But they also have county health departments that are pushing for that data to be provided by the school district, because that's the expectation of the county health department. Ours is not, and ours would actually indicate that it might not be in our best interest to put the data out because of the identifiable nature of what happens because our values are so small and because we don't have 40,000 people in our school district. So I did ask Dr. Ransom today about the possibility of using percentages versus values, versus actual values, and that we would create district-wide data versus specific school data. And I think they were open to that conversation, and I think he wanted, what he asked me to do was to put together a platform in which that information would be shared and show it to him to see how he thought it would be responded to and ensure that it doesn't create any indicators that would allow people to identify specific individuals or if there's more that we could do, like, yeah, this is pretty vague, maybe you can do this and this and this to provide more data. So that's kind of where we've been at with it. Obviously, we've not put that information out publicly. I've shared some of it with you to get a better understanding of exactly how safe our schools are. But publicly, that has not been, has not been information that we've provided for fear of identifiable information and protecting our students and HIPAA and the other things that are associated with it.
Well, I think some of the feedback I'm getting is that people are afraid we're hiding something and a lack of transparency on our part. And we are, we do have a safe environment for their children, and they need to know that, and that would lessen their fear. And I guess that's all I'm asking, is that somehow we get that information out to them and be as transparent as we can.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Harold.
Okay. I am a numbers guy. Normally, I'm the one who asks for map scores by numbers, and I don't like percentages and all that. I think in this case, I'm okay with the following. We have a stated policy that was very clear when we were clear back into September, even August, when we said open. And we said, if we achieve these numbers, we will either close down a classroom, we'll close down a building, we'll close down the district. And I guess my thought is. And I guess my thought is, I'm not so sure I know the beneficial value to saying, you know, "Three kids here, or two kids there, I kind of agree with you." Then we start looking around and start taking role, and even if we could identify those kids or don't identify those kids, what really value does that help us? So, I guess what I'm thinking is, we're opening the schools, okay, and we've opened them. We know as a school board that we have got to keep our elementary schools open. Okay, I have an elementary school, my wife is elementary school, and I have two kids in the high school, which you say is the highest potential risk, and I have no fear of either one, okay? Yes, I don't like masks, but yes, I don't wear the mask, okay? I believe that if you wear your mask, you have greatly reduced ability to get the virus or give the virus. So, I guess what I'm thinking, it's a, you've got to weigh the risk, and I'm okay with the risk of saying, so far, the data is showing that we don't have a huge problem in our school system. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Of course, it's going to exist. Doesn't mean we don't have some cases. Of course, we have some cases. Doesn't mean that there aren't going to be people that are going to pick it up, but I guess what I'm thinking is, is that our far out, the risk of not educating our kids far outweigh what we would do with the data. So, I guess I'm thinking, talk to, and I normally am not saying this, so you'll know this is novel, talk to the county health officials, figure out what data we ought to share, could share, and then also figure out what value, knowing that information. If you told me tomorrow morning, I'm just making up a number, we had 10 positive cases, am I better off or less off knowing that information? You know, I mean, am I not going to send my kids tomorrow, my wife, to school? If you said there's 11, do I go, "Time out, stay home?" You know, so I guess what I'm saying, just think about what we'll do with the data. So, that's all I'm saying.
I think that's why we're having the discussion, is try to understand where the board as a whole would stand with it.
And to continue with what he is saying, there is so much information that we cannot share about the cases that do exist that does not clarify the information you would be sharing. Did that child ever come to school since that, you know, so, yes, we have a case, but we're, did that put any of our other children at risk, you know? And it could be a no, it didn't, you know, they never were here, you know, where no one would even need to be quarantined, even if they didn't have a mask on or whatever.
Melidia makes a great point, and certainly it's something that is worthy of consideration, that if we have transmission house to house, and one of the persons who is now positive was on quarantine before, and all of a sudden, we say, "Well, we have a new positive in school," because that's what would occur, but if that student has already been quarantined and has not had any contact with our students prior to the quarantine and the exposure is taking place in the home, again, there, we can't share all of the information, which I think is certainly something worthy of consideration as we move through this. And part of why there is hesitancy in sharing all of the data that we could, because we can't identify what the data means without, again, drawing identifiable characteristics to our kids or our staff that would ultimately create greater issues and violations of federal law.
And I think it's important to note that what we are doing to inform parents and students and staff when there is somebody who has tested positive, that has come into contact with them, is amazing. It's very timely. Letters are going home in a very timely way if there's been an exposure, whether they need to be quarantined or just to monitor their symptoms, and that's something that I talk to parents in other districts that just is not happening. So, for me, it's important for me to know if my child's been exposed. I don't need to know if Harold's child's been exposed, because that's Harold's, you know, business, not mine, but we're doing a really good job of letting people know. We, you know, if there's been an exposure and we know about it, the appropriate people are being notified. And I think it is also our ethical and legal duty to protect our staff and students' privacy.
Yep, absolutely. And I would want to boast upon our nursing staff and our secretarial staff and our administrative staff, who has done an amazing job of working with our families and with our students and with the county health department to ensure that they are informed of the issues that take place within our schools and that there is direction and guidelines as to what the next step should be. And that has been an incredible practice for our staff, and we get positive reaffirmations on it fairly regularly, because they are doing an incredible job, and it's a lot of work. It is a lot of work. It's a lot of work. We'll leave it at that.
I'm typing really quick. I'm trying Google. I'm not as good technology guy. I was just going to look up, it's been two months since I looked at the COVID deal on Franklin County website. Does it break out detailed by ages?
Yes.
Is that not enough to be transparent? I mean, if you want to-
No, because it doesn't break it out by specific ages. Oh, I mean, in terms of-
Yeah, I mean, if you're-
So, the, so we had this conversation with KDHNE. So, one of the issues is that it doesn't necessarily identify how it impacts schools. So, if he just looks at Franklin County there. What you will see is it's split between like 0 and 9, and, yeah, 10 to 17. So, 10 to 17 would include students from elementary school all the way through high school, right? So, what it doesn't really tell us, because what we're seeing is that we have very few issues at elementary, right? We don't have very many issues at the high school either, but it's more so than we have at the elementary, but this wouldn't identify that that's the case. This would just tell you that between ages 10 and 17, here's the issues that we have. It also doesn't break out which community it's in, so-
Fair enough.
The mitigating factors that we've put in place are not the same as the other schools around us, so.
Well said.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Cobb's on this topic?
I will tell you, it was great to walk into buildings today and see all of our kids across the district in school. I think it was, our staff has put in a great deal of work to get to this point. I appreciate them very much, and I think our students appreciated being back in school today as well.
All right, we will move on to our last, well, no, second to last action item of the night, which is winter sports. And Mrs. Whitaker, are you going to present us on this?
She can stand here with me, and I'll go through it with you all.
Okay, all right.
I've had time to be a winter sport expert.
So, the conversation that we've had really is dependent upon the capacity of the north gym, which is about 1,000 persons, and so, in conversations with the county health department and Dr. Ransom, what they identified was about 20% of capacity because it is an isolated space and that entrance and exit goes out basically one set of doors, even though there are four doors there. Even if you open them all, people will wait to go through the same door for whatever reason. So, the idea behind this is right there, you can see how tickets would be allocated. The south gym would have 90 spectators in it, which is exactly what we did for volleyball, so that doesn't change a whole lot. So, the ticketing system is in place, and then you can see wrestling there. It is not a lot different than what we saw in the fall for our other activities.
Yeah, sure. The one big difference about ticketing you'll notice is that the visiting school doesn't get as many tickets. That was something our league voted on. We felt as though some of the schools don't travel as well as others, so why, let's give our parents, our families, the opportunity to see their student athletes when we're at home. So, we'll have less tickets when our students are traveling, just as those who are traveling here to see their students, we'll be offering less tickets. So, I did want to note that, because that is a big, kind of, a shift in thinking from the fall sports.
You'll also notice that there was a portion of tickets that were identified for a student section for basketball. Again, as we continue to learn more and more about how we go through this, we recognize that not having students at football game was something that they really wanted to do, and as we saw more students be able to go to volleyball events, as we went to substate and state and so on and so forth, it was, it's important for our students to be able to participate in that manner. So, as we learn more about what we do, we continue to change our processes to try to ensure as much normalcy as we can, but a 25-student section is not nearly what we're used to, but it is a step in the right direction. Middle school, I believe, is 90 students or 90 spectators specifically at the OMS gym, and I think it's the same for wrestling as well. So, that, you'll also see the protocols they put in place. So, if you remember, the protocols that we put in place for summer conditioning as well as for fall sports, we've extended those protocols into these. Many of them are identified by CASIA and recommended by CASIA that we do particular things, so we want to make sure that we follow those guidelines, but we also want to make sure that the board is aware that we have these protocols in place, that the conversations have existed with our coaching staffs, and that is the expectation of our coaches to implement these practices as we work with our kids, to, again, to try to limit what is a very risky. There are two sports that KSDE is identifying right now as the most susceptible to concern, basketball and wrestling. Hey, and look what sport and what season is in. It's basketball and wrestling season. So, we want to make sure that we have all of the protocols that we need to have in place to limit the ability of any issues that would pop up due to this, but we've already seen some issues, and I'm sure that we will see other issues as we go through. It's just part of what we're going to see with athletics.
I don't know if it's supposed to answer questions now or later, but, you know, a few minutes ago, you heard me say, "I really believe in masks, even though I hate them, and I really think that we can put students in classrooms and be very, very safe." Well, I'd want to carry that same logic over to a big, wide-open space that has several thousand square feet and great ventilation systems working. I don't know what 20% really means, but I'm assuming that means there's a lot of open space, okay? If we had spectators wearing masks, which we're going to, right? Could we not exceed 20%? I'm not saying go to 100%, I'm not saying put them wall to wall, but I guess what I'm thinking is, especially with the students, you know, they're closer together all day long, and now we're sitting there going, "Time out." The second time tonight, I've said, "Time out," so let me use a different thing. Now, we're saying at night for basketball, to your sports teams, you can't come as close. So, I'm just throwing it out and saying, "Can't we get more in?"
So, one, we didn't make the number up. County health department, Dr. Ransom indicated that we probably shouldn't exceed 20% of capacity. The other thing and the difference between what we're doing in classrooms and what would take place in a gym is that we can control the classroom environment and we cannot control it, for the same reasons that when people got into a football stadium, they took their masks off and kind of did what they wanted to do. Not everybody that walked into our football stadium continued to wear their mask the entire time, even though that was the expectation. If you put that many people in a gymnasium, you're going to have people that are going to choose not to and put other people at risk, and again, if what we want our administrators to do is be the mask police, we can certainly have that conversation with people and see if they want to increase the volume, but I guess that's not where I want our administrators to spend their time. They've got a lot of things to do. Being the mask police at events is not something that I think any one of them look forward to.
Don't easily go well, I think.
No.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this before we take action tonight?
Have we, have you considered, or would it be possible to somehow let more students in, or if you know in advance, like, if a family, like, for instance, I have two kids on there, so I get eight tickets, but there's not eight of us, you know? So, there are a lot of tickets that go unused, or like the 45 visiting team, you know, they might, may not be there. Is there-
It's hard for us to coordinate that ahead of time, but what we told the students all throughout football season, and will continue to tell them, to kind of work with their friends, right? Like, if they know that there is a friend of theirs that has two siblings, they get a plethora of tickets, and that family may or may not use those tickets, to communicate with them, and if you can get a ticket from one of your friends, then you absolutely could join right on top of that 25 students that were allowed in our student section. So, we tried to come up with a way to orchestrate that in the office, but literally, that would be a full-time job of somebody trying to figure out how many tickets are handed out and how many we haven't used. So, this was the system that we decided on as a league, that we felt would be best to make sure that we aren't exceeding that limit, but giving the students lots of opportunities to talk with their friends and to get those extra tickets if they would like to, on top of which now gratefully, we'll be able to have at least 25 students in the section, but we would definitely have more if they can get a ticket from a friend. And I know that that was a hard conversation from parents, because sometimes, like, families would tell me, "Well, I don't know if I need four tickets or if I need all six of my tickets." And so, that was kind of why we would split it up and say, "Okay, you always had four tickets every game, you had four tickets." So, that way, a family from week to week can make those decisions based on, I know we had a lot of family members come from out of town to be able to see them play in person, so it just gets really hard to manage, and so we're trying to come up with a system that is easily manageable, that still allows our student athletes, our families, and our students in the school to have as much opportunity as possible to be able to watch their friends play.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, would somebody like to take some action on this? I will make a motion that we approve the spectator criteria for winter sports and athletic protocols as presented.
Second?
It was moved by Julie D'Andrio and second of Shanda Olmstead, that we approve the spectator criteria for winter sports and athletic protocols. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes, yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. All right, we are down to our personnel report. You all have been presented with the personnel report. Is there an action to approve said report?
Madam President, I move that we pass the, approve the personnel report.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Harold Wingert and second of Linda Alderman, that we approve tonight's personnel report. All in favor, please raise your hand, and that passes 7-0 as well, and we are down to announcements.
All right, so, last thing, one, and we just spent a whole lot of time talking about. All of our students are back in the fold, at least in-person students. We still have remote students withstanding and continuing to remote in. Our facilities committee met this morning. This was something that we talked about back in July. We met for the first time, had a great meeting, and we'll continue to develop what that long-range plan looks like. The bleachers are in at OHS and look awesome. They look phenomenal and function much better than our old bleachers did, so it will be exciting. Again, we won't be able to put 1,000 people into the stands, but it will be exciting to see how people respond to the bleachers, because they are certainly better, certainly more accessible to our patrons. Track, again, we've had this conversation, it's been asphalted, now curing, so that's a positive. What it does mean is that people can walk on it, people can do different things on it, which was different from just a rock track, basically, that was there before. We also want to congratulate Darby Waddell, Kirsten Evans, and being recognized as all-state tournament team members at the state volleyball tournament. They had a fabulous run and really excited about the next thing, which is a third-place finish at the 4A state tournament. So, congratulations to the Lady Cyclones volleyball team, Coach Meyer, Coach Crenshaw, and Coach Jenin for all their hard work on the season and being great representatives of our school and community. Congratulations to all.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand, and that passes 7-0.
All right, thank you.